Recording. All right. We'll call a meeting to order. Jason Ryan for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Then I'll just go through the district mission statement. In partnership with communities, the mission of Dilworth, Glendon, Feld, and School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible, lifelong learners. I think we've met everyone except for Brooke. And we've got Chase here and Forrest as well, and Chase. We've got visitor and. So we'll go on to number four. This is to. And do we have a change to the agenda?
The agenda you have in front of you is correct.
All right. Do we have a motion?
So.
Motion by Amy, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Fine. So call. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Number five, public comments and rebel recognition. Do we have any public comments? So if you don't. We'll go on to rebel recognition.
Sweet.
Sweet. Oh, gosh.
You know, the baseball teams kind of wrap up their stuff, state tournament plays, and they did well, so they should drop out their summer seasons. Fishing league is coming to a close. We've got a big event next Wednesday, so a week from Wednesday is the fundraiser for them, and this Wednesday, there's a little fishing and big tournament, a little pressure on the boat captains, so hopefully have a good report after that. Just thank you, I think last week we did say kudos to the custodians, but Chase is here too now, so you can hear it, but just all their work. Keeping our buildings and the grounds look really nice and kept up also, thank those guys for that.
Any other rebel recognition?
Oh, I'm sorry, we should say tonight, and the reason we have an award meeting early is because there is a parent meeting tonight for fall sports, so that is kicking off, so. Kudos to Katie, that's a big project for her and all our coaches and players, so yeah. Here we go.
All right. All right. Any other rebel recognition? All right, we'll go on to item six, six point one, historical.
Hello. Hey, it's Dilworth Middle and activities. So our summer cleaning is going pretty well. Just have a handful of rooms left. Size, we have two left in the elementary and six left here in Glendon. All our hallways, we're starting to strip and wax those. Elementary, all we have is there's one hallway left, and middle school's all done, completed, and we're working on the high school side this week. So with the newer vinyl, we'll be scrubbing that toward the end, it's just that there are scrubbers, so it's not a big deal. Lockers have been cleaned out and wiped down, and the middle school's got decided. Big thank you to Andrew from the jail and his helpers. Called them in, they came out and took care of the whole middle school side for us, so that was a huge help. And then we got a jump on the high school side too from Cole in the jail, and his crew, they can now build like people lockers for us. But we should be done with the high school side sometime this week with the lockers. Gyms, entry weights, miscellaneous rooms, we'll get that. We're on schedule to complete before school starts, so we're all on schedule. Employee update, employees are doing good and working to get everything completed before school starts. Both sites have been able to keep on schedule even though we get a lot of added tasks, delivering boxes and moving stuff, and so they're doing awesome. I'm making some changes to the schedule. Working times, I'm going to add a mid shift, so we'll have one day shift at seven to three thirty, one mid shift from twelve to eight thirty. That mid shift will just tell that day shift with lunch, sometimes it gets busy right at the end. And then they'll be here waiting on that night and half for other sessions, so that would work out real nice, and then the rest of it. We're still short a couple people in Glendon, but I'm in the process right now of hiring. New schedules, I don't know if a lot of people like it, so it might be a couple more openings, but I'm trying to stay ahead of that, so. Equipment and supplies, we're sitting good with our supplies, we recently went through our inventory and narrowed down what we use and what we don't use, so with less random chemicals, we can be more accurate with our ordering, we'll keep track of it more, and everybody cleans the same. Not one person uses a different chemical or anything, so it just makes everything more easy to make. Maintenance side, employees, I've been short all summer. One employee named Ryan has been doing quite a bit, but once school starts, he should be back, should be back to normal. Repairs and fixes, I could have eight pages long, but I just did a couple highlights. We re-sited the football shed, we renovated the garage door that we had in storage, so that's all brand new, we painted the inside, so it's basically. Painting throughout the school, we've been doing a lot of touch-up painting, trying to make the school look as good as it can. Lighting upgrades in classrooms, I know that's in the.
Strategic plan.
Yeah, strategic plan, so you can keep track of what room for upgrading our lights, the LEDs. I worked with IT and we installed a bunch of new cameras throughout both schools. Patching a lot of walls, installing the mats in Fort Jim here where we kept having some issues with wall, and again, we used some mats that we had laying around, so all the better. Recently, in April, we had to install a new water softener because one here went out, causing a lot of havoc. And then the hot water concessions in the locker rooms, research on not working correctly, and so I've been working with the program, slowly getting hot water back out here. Some items I wanted to put on here just so you guys knew about them and are in your head, so when they come up, it's not a whole night. Dilworth kitchen exhaust stand, it went out, and it's like a sauna in there, so we're gonna have to get that taken care of before things start to mold and cause more issues. Boiler here, Glendon has trees, they're gonna get weak, so I'm working on figuring out how to get that fixed and remedy it rapidly, so. Fire panel in Dilworth, it needs an upgrade. HVAC units, everybody knows about our HVAC units. I have a company brought to them with myself, so we can make sure we know exactly what's going on with the whole area. Heat wheel replacement, that's also in our, one of our, or two of our units. They haven't been working for years, and I was talking to our HVAC guy, he was telling me savings we could get if we had those up running. It not only doesn't take off boilers, but all run the cost in heating the entire building. We need some mini splits in our data room closets, all our data room closets are pretty hot, they're really, really hot, and that's not good for the equipment. I think there's three different closets that we are looking at, and that's our brains of our operation if you can say that, it's not good. Throughout both schools, we have a lot of pneumatic control valves for each rooms, so when somebody wants to change the temperature in their room, we physically have to go find the valve and seal it, kind of fix it till where it is, and there's a lot of them going out, so I'm gonna come up with kind of a ten-year plan of how we. Our elevator went down recently and we're going to upgrade it. I saw they're coming out with a bunch of new pools and recollections, and we're gonna have to do some upgrades anyway, so we're gonna be looking at that. Continuing roof leak, we're slowly taking care of those. And then our lunchroom walls, we painted the top half, and then our plan is we're gonna panel the bottom half so the chairs and stuff don't scratch it, and it just keeps it nicer.
That's Glendon, okay.
Just here, never break over there.
Got it.
Does she love?
Does she love, it's not liking the chairs, but it's anything will.
Lots of painting and patching, and so it's a partner there, it'll last a lot longer and it will look nice, and we'll be doing it all in house, so that'll be nice. Equipment, our lift is having some issues, and it's not big enough to reach our ceilings in our gyms, so I'm gonna look into training it in or selling it, and then. It's a grant from Minosha, safety grant, help pay for some of that. We'll have a lift that we can actually use. That's it for maintenance, grounds, that's a new thing we started this summer, I think it's going awesome, we have two staff members, they're both students, they're good hitters. I haven't had issues, if I ask them to do something, they do it, they paint, they do the grass, weeding, whatever you need, they just want to work. I don't know if you noticed out here, they hand painted multiple lines and stuff in the parking lot, so they're doing an awesome job. That's all I had for myself. One of them is gonna be doing football, but the other one, I think, keep up, and Ryan and Brian have been really good at, you know, picking up some of the slack. Before we had the two students, it was just Ryan and Brian doing it, and they were able to get a cut once a week, so it's a pretty decent amount. But by the time school starts, I don't think we have a cut. I gotta call in here, because I think people that just wanna sit on the lawn more.
Board members. No.
Does that elevator currently work? Like, will it be functional for school to start?
The issue is, it's, our elevator is very old.
Yeah.
Like, something does go down on it, then it's down for a while over there, so we have to take the part off of the elevator, send it in and get it fixed, because they don't take parts for it anymore. Hopefully, when it comes back, nothing else has gone wrong since then, and we can add it up, but having it down for that long, the new change of part or something, it's not good for the kids, we have kids that need chairs.
But now with this redo, they're gonna take care of all that.
They're gonna take care of all that, and then, so we'll add some of the features that are not required in the elevators.
So that's a near future item?
Yeah, it should be.
It'll work, yeah.
It's just waiting, I think, well, you can correct me too wrong if I'm wrong, Chase, but it's kind of just waiting for everything to come in, so they can do the work. It's all been approved, it's working, it's just we need to, I mean, it's not to code in some areas, it's not to this, so when all these things come in, it sounded like they were gonna be able to do it very efficiently.
Yeah.
Once it, everything comes in, so yeah, we should be up to speed.
And maybe as well, they kind of put us. Yeah, yeah, so they might even borrow some of the parts that we're waiting for from other projects or.
Chase, what is the heat wheel?
Oh, a heat wheel? It's a big wheel inside the unit that heats up and then pulls the air past that heat wheel, and so far, it hasn't worked for, it's been six, seven years.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, and so we've been losing all that energy, it's more cost effective to use the heat wheel than boiler, so you get more wear and tear on whether you have. If it's not running how it's supposed to, then it's not running efficiently. Yeah. I didn't either. Oh, I saw it, I.
Yes.
Everything's expensive.
I was gonna say, I think you're connecting in that.
You probably, I don't know, you signed the bills in the past for the elevator bill, so.
I have that HVAC guy kind of do a calculator of the cost savings, I think it's, I'll take a look at it and kind of see what savings you can get over ten years, so I think it'll help us out. Again, with the boilers, I just wanna make those boilers last as long as we can, so it's here, I'm having him test the, I hope that's it, so the chemicals are right, it's eating away at our connections. So the stuff we put back in is gonna be correct, we're gonna have a filter, it's gonna be good, it should last us a lot anyway.
So once the heat wheel potentially is there and then the units are fixed, will most of the rooms have air or not?
No. Well, most of them will have air, they are, most rooms have air conditioning anyway, but.
Because elementary rooms are hot.
And that's why it's a big concern for me.
And they were hot before you got here, this is not on you, so.
It's why I'm like, how a lid, Chase, it's cold, yeah, so that's why I wanna do it thoroughly with the HVAC guy. What are we missing? Why don't we have things?
Thank you.
Because I know it's, I was a student, and I was trying to learn, and I was sweating, and so.
Yeah, exactly. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Chase? All right. Thank you so much, Chase.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go on to six point two, board committee reports. We'll start with the policies committee.
We met right before this and went over, sorry, I'm trying to look, a bunch of policies. A lot of changes to most of them. We did make sure, Shannon made sure to meet with admin on, like, the attendance and dress, just to make sure all the rules are the same in the handbook, so that we're doing what we say we're doing. Talked about we're getting our resource officer for the year. And then the first and only greetings, like, obviously tuition, we just went over what the cost is, and that's what we would get from Minnesota students, so that's what we have in place for the out of state. I think that's most of the changes. Are we going over that four eleven?
What's that, four eleven?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's how we're gonna, yeah, well, we can talk about, we're talking about that, and then, but it'll be at the next board meeting. Hopefully to have that approved then, if the board agrees.
So the policy committee met on four eleven, which is donation of employee leave, we don't currently have that, but we're talking about maybe creating one, so you can donate sick hours to another employee potentially, so. We had like a draft that we went over, and you can send it out to see what other things, and put it on for the next year.
Any other questions for, any ending questions for?
At our work group session that we had this summer, we did discuss the mission statement, and we all agreed to just move it as it is, so.
The other question I have is just to confirm that the five oh seven still does not, with school resource officers, and the five oh seven point five would govern them being of the policies of their own departments and the state postboard.
Say that again, Nicole.
That five oh seven, the corporal punishment prone restraints.
Yep.
Excludes police officers and SROs, and that the five oh seven point five school resource officers dictates that they will follow the policies and procedures of their own governing body and the Minnesota State postboard.
Yeah, so when the state made their changes or updates.
We adopted that appropriate.
Yeah. Because that's the latest language from the state, and that's what MSP has adopted.
I can sure that that hasn't changed.
Yep.
And then we reviewed policy nine oh two, that's the use of school facilities, and so basically, what policy has been cleaned up somewhat, so that the fees are. Different for different types of entities that want to use our facilities, so.
It's much easier to read, like, they state classes and then what the class would be charged for, so like, our students with the class want someone out of the community, would get a different class, so. Easier to read, sums it up, much less confusing.
One of the, one of the reasons to revisit it was Chase was having some issues with the building not being taken care of over the weekend, let's say. So he would be here on a Friday night, everything looked wonderful, come back on a Sunday, and there's Gatorades built in the gym, there was garbage in the hallway, it's like, okay, what, what happened? Well, there was a club or a group in here, and they just kind of did whatever. The other thing we've noticed is there's been some damage done to the buildings, accidents, whatever, and just, there has to be some fees, more fees than some of our local clubs, because we do want them to use the building, we want them to have access, we don't want the fee to be counterproductive, so they're not using it, but yet there has to be some fee, because there's been a lot of cleanup and follow-up after the case, or after the events, so. That's the only other thing that was reflected in the change in the policy was, we had to add some fees to some of our own local groups, just because, and again, nothing crazy.
And making sure people who come in have their own insurance.
Yeah, yes, yeah, good point.
All right, anything else on the policy committee? All right, budget committee, we met for a meeting here as well, we talked about enrollment. We are sitting actually pretty well right now, fifteen hundred and fifty-two students, and that's about as good as we may be been since chance met here, probably.
Yeah, we've been close to that and backed down or whatever.
Backed down, I don't know. Expect that number fluctuate, but yeah, we're, we're at a decent spot, our budget's not based on that number, it's a little more conservative, so.
Just, I'm sorry, just to let everybody know that fifteen fifty-two is with eighty-eight kindergarteners. We're still at eighty-eight. Last year, we had a hundred and thirty-some. Year before, we had a hundred and nine.
We're not expecting forty to come out of the woodwork.
We, I'm just saying, the one fifty-two is a good number, and it's with eighty-eight kindergarteners.
Right.
So again, if you have a kindergartner, please sign them up. That's a little scary for the superintendent.
Yeah. Same. Yeah. Seen that kind of fluctuate too. The audit, we talked a little bit about the upcoming audit.
It's just those dates, that's why I didn't dig into it too much.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's coming up this fall, so just to know, you know, sometimes they'll call board members, so you might be the lucky one, and they're just asking, they'll ask some questions about that, and we'll see that probably around November. Then we talked a little bit about the LOR, the, what's the LOR stand for?
Local optional revenue.
So the local optional revenue, and there's a move afoot, trying to get legislators to try to up this amount, so this is, when we let make levy in the fall, winter, we essentially are, we always go for the max. It would be asking for more of the ability for the local board to be able to increase that, be able to do, have that higher, so we get more per student. The reason, one of the reasons why we like that is because it's equalized, meaning that if we increase the levy, our taxpayers pay more, but the state also picks up a good chunk of that as well, so right now, I think it's, we pay, our taxpayers would pay about sixty-two percent, and the state pays either thirty-eight percent. So it's generally a pretty good deal for us, and certainly better than trying to do a referendum or something like that, so we're hopeful that state legislators are listening to us. We went over a little bit of the restricted funds and all the funds that, the additional monies we got last year, and they don't, you know, there's big numbers that are thrown out by the state legislator, but a lot of that doesn't necessarily come to us specifically, a lot of that is for other programs, and some of those are good programs, it's not that, it's just, we don't necessarily see a, an increase per student, so. Yeah, I think that's all we have for the budget. Questions for anything?
Yeah, I'll go.
All right, very good, okay, we'll go on to Lake Ag is Ag C Education Committee.
I've only been to one meeting so far. It's interesting, they're a little slower, they're just wrapping up for the school year, getting their things together, I've got some eyes across some teeth, and it's a beautiful facility out there, I've never been there before, it's pretty nice. Yeah, I know, nothing major was discussed, it was a quick, just information, we'll touch on a couple of points, and expecting the next couple meetings to be a little more detailed on dialing some things in for the upcoming school year. Or to have their numbers, should be pretty, pretty solid across the board compared to the previous year. Most numbers were for the previous year, but they seem to enjoy, or I should say enjoy, they seem to feel good about the, the numbers moving forward, so. Curious to see how everything will go, and should, should go pretty smooth for the most part, so we're trying to do some integration with, making sure some of our personnel, being a new member, gets integrated. So that's some of the discussion, on some of the smaller committees that they're, they're doing, including, including in some of our teachers and whatnot in there, so more details on that on our next meeting probably.
Thank you, Mike. Move on to six point three, superintendent.
Yeah, so obviously, this board meeting was adjusted just because we have some school board election, so we have a school board election coming up in November, and there are gonna be some openings at the board level, and so we do have two people that have come forward, actually, I'm sorry, three, somebody that's gonna rerun, found out today, and so that was great. But Matt's here tonight, Matt, I wanted to know somebody that put his name in, and also Angela also put her name in officially, so we do have a couple, and then Brittany was in today too, so. Thank you to those three to put their name in the hat, we appreciate that, and so, yeah, so that's, next Tuesday is the deadline, so if there's anybody else thinking about it, please talk to Brooke before that. Anyway, so no, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that, that next Tuesday is the deadline, and thank those people that have come over, so that's awesome. And then, this is just to elaborate a little bit on what we talked about in our budget committee meeting today, Clay County superintendents, we, we met as a group, so this is you, Lynn Hinnerdahl, it's Barnesville, Holly, us, and Morehead, those five superintendents, we met with our local representatives and senators, and talked about some options that a school board could have potentially with the levy and approving the levy, without having to necessarily go to the voters with an operating referendum, which is, it's expensive, it takes a lot of time, it's a big effort, it's a big push. And you guys are elected officials, just like they are elected officials, and I said, let's let these local people have that kind of power or choice, they represent our community, so let them vote on it. So we, we presented it as, as I did tonight to the budget committee, and what those dollars would mean to our district, and would avoid some other unnecessary public meetings potentially, so. It's all driven by the state, the state has to open up that opportunity for us, right now, we have seven hundred and twenty-four dollars a student that is part of our levy right now, that's been since two thousand and fourteen, it didn't have any inflation tied to it. If there was any inflation tied to it at all, and we just, and I showed these guys exactly what the, the inflation rates have been since two thousand and fourteen to this year, that, that number should be at nine sixty-seven a student instead of seven twenty-four. We pay inflated rates, but we do get inflated money, and slowly, that's what every school district is having to deal with, is that the dollars that we get aren't covering our costs, and so this is just another example, or a way that maybe we could remedy that moving forward. So, we'll have more on this in the future, and hopefully legislators, they were very open to it, receptive to it, we've shared it with some of our association groups, MASA got it today, MSBA got it as well, so we're gonna have them look through it and see what their thoughts are, and the state impact, so we'll hear more in the future, but yeah, I guess that's all I have for tonight, if anybody has questions for me.
All right. We'll go on to seven point one, this is from, the regular minutes from July twenty second, two thousand and four, and I have a motion, motion, I have a second. Second question, like, questions or discussion? Second, like, uh, questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Uh, to, I heard the consent agenda. And this is to approve bills for August two thousand and twenty-four, an amount of?
One hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-three cents.
Treasurer, monthly budget report is in your packet. Um, this is also to, uh, approve those, the resignation, approve the resignation of Cindy Flores' food service effective the end of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Approve the resignation of Karen Altbilly, elementary teacher, effective end of the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four school year. Approve the resignation of Alicia Dennis, paraprofessional, effective the end of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. And then also approve the extracurricular coaches, list of fall extracurricular coaches. That also is in your packet. Do I have a motion? Motion by, hold on, a second.
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion?
Um, I, I think it's important to say, uh, for Karen Altbilly, for her years of service to the district, um, she has another opportunity, obviously, so just wanna thank her for her years and her time here at DGF, um, and just wanna make sure I say that publicly in, in our meeting, because, uh, her years have been appreciated. Oh, and I should also say that there's some coaching opportunities here for anybody that's interested, so you'll notice there are some openings still, um, for, for winter and spring, so Katie is working hard on trying to get those filled, but there are some opportunities.
All right, any, any questions or, other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. All right, on to number nine, you and I finished business, nine point one, this is a motion, um, to approve second reading of the following policies, five oh one, school weapons, five oh two, search of student lockers, test personal possessions, five oh three, student attendance, five oh four, student dress and appearance, five oh five, distribution of non-school sponsored materials on school premises by students and employees, five oh seven, corporal punishment and prone restraint, five oh seven point five, school resource officers, five oh eight, extended school year for certain students with individualized education programs, five oh nine, enrollment of non-resident students, five ten, school activities, five eleven, student fundraising. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Amy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion? I guess the only question I had was on, um, you know, there was, uh... Student dress and appearance, is that something that was being normalized with the handbook, is that right?
Yep, and that's what Brittany, you said in your report, uh, that we did, that's what I was listening. No, it's okay, the, the principals and I got together to make sure that the language is the same in the policy as it is in there, and they have done, so, yep, that's a good question.
I think it is updated from what we had before, we were like pretty specific in years past, and now it's kind of more, more generalized statement like that, we're back to policy.
Just so there's a difference, yeah. Sure. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. All right, nine point two, this is to approve the first and only reading of the following policy, four thirteen, harassment and violence, five oh six, student discipline, five oh nine point one, outstate tuition, five oh nine two, open enrollment lottery process, five fourteen, bullying prohibition policy. Do I have a motion? Motion by Brittany. Do I have a second? Second by, uh, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, I've signed. Nine point three, this is, uh, motion to approve a resolution for accepting donations as a result. Supposedly, it's a resolution, it's part of the resolution.
For me, or? That's for me, or? Whereas Minnesota statutes one, two, three, B, point zero two, subdivision six provides, the board may receive benefit of the district's request, or gives for purpose, and that the department may have to be of any capacity, and the district work for the benefit of people thereof, including trust created to provide people with a district advanced education, or any advancement of education, and whereas Minnesota statutes four sixty-five, B, provides, any city, county, school district, or town may accept a grant, device of real or personal property and maintain such property for the benefit of its citizens in accordance with the terms prescribed by the donor. Nothing herein shall authorize such acceptance or use for religious or sectarian purposes. Every such acceptance shall be by resolution of the governing body, adopting the majority of its members, expressing such terms in full, and whereas every such acceptance shall be by resolution of the governing body, and the majority of its members expressing such terms in full, therefore be resolved at the school board, held in public schools, or regularly exercised in following, which is a federal law. From the DGF touchdown club, the amount of one hundred and ninety dollars, seventy-three cents, to fix the football shed.
Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by Amy, or, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Any questions or discussion? Just thank you to the DGF touchdown club, that's very nice. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, sorry.
What's wrong with the shed?
What's wrong with the shed? The shed was, as Chase talked about, it was mice infested, so they tore it all apart and put it in, and we had that, if you heard, there was a garage door, a recoil, not recoil, anyway, rolling door that was in the back shed, so they took that out and put it on there, just so it, let's just say this, it's sealed up better, the site, it's not gonna fall over, so when the kid's going to get the mats now, or the, or the dummies, they won't fall over, so. It needed a major upgrade, so. And it's not as friendly to the fitters.
Any other questions or discussion? Is the resolution will, uh, do my role? Laura? Nicole?
Aye.
Ava?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Micah? Motion passed. On to nine point four, this is to approve the certified contract for Desiree Kinzel, middle school teacher, M A, steps six, effective the start of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Do I have a motion? Motion by Brittany? Laura?
By Brittany.
Brittany, I'm sorry, my ears are deceiving me, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Micah. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Uh, nine point five, this is to approve the non-certified contract for Samantha Brown, speech language pathologist, assistant, class four, step one, effective the start of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Amy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole, any questions or discussion?
I have a question, if this is, is someone that is an assistant, is the color, like overseeing, or like doing evals, or can she do evals and stuff?
So she has to, nope, she has to be supervised by a speech pathologist and Wanda also.
So one of ours here will be okay?
Yep, Wanda is, Wanda's her supervisor, or will be her mentor and oversee, and then she has to do all the official work, um, and she, Samantha is going back to school or going to, she finished her two-year degree, now she's gonna go on to get her full speech, but it's gonna be a while, cause you gotta have your masters too, but, so she'll work under Wanda, and Wanda's agreed to doing that, so, yep, no, good question.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. On to nine point six, this is to approve, uh, the non-certified contract for Alicia Gibson, food service class one, step one, effective the start of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Do I have a motion? Motion by Laura. Do I have a second? Second by Micah. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. On to nine point seven, this is to approve the non-certified contract for Sabrina Mahi, food service class one, step three, effective the start of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Amy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. On to nine point eight, this is a motion for, to approve non-certified contract for Chaz Morgan Custodian, class two, step two, effective August fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Nicole, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Ten point one, the next board meeting will be Monday, August nineteenth, uh, six o'clock here at the DGF community room, and, uh, the personnel committee meeting will, uh, follow the school board meeting in the same location. So that's just a little bit off cycle, just for those that are, um, we have to do that due to, uh, for the election, um, upcoming in the fall, so. Uh, on to number eleven, this is, uh, to adjourn, do I have a motion? Motion by Nicole, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries.